I'll call to order the meeting on Monday, March 28th. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Amos. Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have the minutes from the special meeting of March the first and the regular meeting of March 14th before you. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashford. Is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. Is there any additions or deletions, changes? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We have four presentations tonight, so if the clerk would please read the first one.
Proclamation recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month will be presented to representatives of the St. Clair County Child Abuse and Neglect Council.
If you'd like to join me at the podium. I'm just gonna stay down there when you read the second one. Hello. I will read this, and then you're welcome to make remarks.
Thank you.
Okay. Whereas Port Huron's children are our future, whenever one child is abused or neglected, all of the community suffers. And whereas in St. Clair County, 6,777 children were living in poverty, 4,098 children were living in homes investigated for child abuse and neglect, and 527 children were confirmed victims of child abuse and neglect. And whereas child abuse is one of the nation's most serious public health problems, and studies have well documented the link between abuse and neglect and a wide range of medical, emotional, and behavioral disorders, including depression, alcoholism, drug abuse, and juvenile delinquency. And whereas unemployment, poverty, parental drug and alcohol abuse, stress, and social isolation increase the risk for an environment in which child maltreatment can occur. And whereas promoting optimum family functioning resiliency, adequate social support systems, and knowledge of parenting child development, all are known protective factors which prevent child maltreatment and strengthen families. And whereas this month, and each month thereafter, the city of Port Huron, under the leadership of the St. Clair County Child Abuse and Neglect Council, pledges the strength of our entire community to prevent child abuse and neglect and not stand by in silence. Now therefore, I, Pauline M. Rep., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Port Huron, and on behalf of councilmembers Amos, Archibald, Ashford, Harris, Lewandowski, and Ruiz, do hereby proclaim April 2016 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month, acknowledging our community's responsibility and duty to cherish our children and help them grow and develop to their fullest potential. There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, and all the citizens who are watching this evening. We'd like to thank you very, very much for this meaningful proclamation, and also for the opportunity to hang our big blue ribbons on city lamp posts downtown Port Huron for the entire month of April. It is a time for us to concentrate on the safety of all of our children. With me tonight are our staff members, Jamie Alexander, Lindsay Chop, Sarah Wager, Ashley Troy. These are the young ladies who work every day trying to prevent child abuse and present prevention programs to over 5,000 young students of St. Clair County, and interviewing last year 165 alleged child sexual abuse victims. Ashley Troy, our forensic interviewer since her tenure with us, has interviewed over 670 alleged child abuse victims. I would like to take one moment tonight to remind every single person here and every single person watching about the value of reporting. Again, our community this year has been jarred into seriously considering the value of prevention. Whether you are a mandated reporter or not, whether you know for sure or not, whether you want to be involved or not, it is your obligation when you see child abuse to report it. Make it your business to support our belief that it shouldn't hurt to be a child. Thank you very much.
Proclamation recognizing April 5th, 2016, as National Service Recognition Day will be presented to Scott Crawford, Executive Director of the Foster Grandparent Program, which is sponsored by the Council of Aging Incorporated.
Read this proclamation, and if you'd like to say a few words. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas the nation's cities and counties are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas national service participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas senior core volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Foster Grandparent Program has served St. Clair County for over 39 years, has 70 volunteers that serve in schools, head start classrooms, and other nonprofit child-serving programs, providing over 60,000 hours annually to at-risk children. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and we are joining with mayors across the country to support the Mayor and County Day of Recognition for National Service on April the 5th, 2016. Now therefore, I, Pauline M. Rep., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Port Huron, and on behalf of councilmembers Archibald, Amos, Ashford, Harris, Lewandowski, and Ruiz, do hereby proclaim April the 5th, 2016, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities, of which you have done very much through the Foster Grandparent Program. So, thank you.
On behalf of the Council on Aging, I would like to thank the mayor and the council for this recognition. Laura Nessel, who is the Director of the Foster Grandparent Program, is unfortunately sick today. She has what seems to be going around. As the Director of the Council on Aging, I am privileged to see the foster grandparent kind of from both sides. I have two children that are in the Port Huron area school district that have benefited from the foster grandparents in their classroom. But as the Director of the Council on Aging, I also see it from the other side, and the benefit that it is to the seniors that are able to volunteer in these classrooms, in these daycare settings, and the benefit that they get out of it, I think sometimes far outweighs the benefit that the kids get. It's a help to both. They are the grandparent to some of these kids. They are the one that looks out for them in the classroom, gives them a little bit of extra help. And we are very blessed at the Council on Aging to be able to sponsor this program. And I'd also like to introduce Tamara Lavati. She is one of the staff people for Foster Grandparents. So again, on behalf of the Council on Aging, I would like to thank you for this recognition.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
I would just like to ask the childhood neglect, when people want to report, where do they report? How do they do that?
Do you want to come?
Could you take the mic?
Yeah, right up to the mic, please.
I think you missed the opportunity. We could tell them that it's the most important thing that you have to report, but how do you, you know, when you do detect something like this, you need to let them know.
Yep, and we ask anybody, as our director Sally said, whether you are a mandated reporter or just someone on the street and you see something that is concerning, you can contact That is the Department of Health and Human Services centralized intake number.
Okay, so they don't call 911, they just call you, correct?
Well, if it, you know, you can call 911, you know, if you need to, or if you were out, if you suspected someone was in a vehicle with a child, and they had been drinking, something like that, but otherwise, that would be the other number.
That's the number, oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
We will move on to presentation number three.
Chief Michael Reeves will present the 2015 Department of Public Safety Annual Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager Freed. Tonight, I'd like to present the 2015 Annual Public Safety Report. Last month's meeting, you had the code enforcement by itself, and today we'll give you a glimpse of the police and fire activities for 2015. First thing I want to point out here, I've kind of noted this in the past, but I wanted you to look at the busy hours and times of the day on the police side, so you get an idea of what time of the day the hour, the calls for service start to pick up, and what's our busiest times. You see, usually 8:00 at night, well over 2,000 calls there for service. Calls by hours of the day, another way to put it, the graph there shows you, it starts to pick up just before noon, usually around 10:00 in the morning, and it's usually non-stop until a little after 2:00 in the morning. The busiest days of the week, obviously Fridays are busiest day of the week. Thursday, the only day we get a little bit of a reprieve is on the Lord's Day, on Sunday. A couple of things in our year-end review that you see that are going on here, we always have our 911 ceremony. We co-partnered with the Rec. Department this year in the 2015 color run. As you can see, it was exactly, it was as advertised, a color run. There's also a picture of the 134th birthday party for the Police Department with the women of PHPD. A couple of things I want to point out on our statistics for the year. As I indicated in the report that you have, a copy that you have, the statistical information, we were severely hampered in putting together this report and moving forward. And one of the reasons that, as I've talked to you about the last year and a half about Clemis, and the coming of Clemis, and the integration of Clemis, and how that was going to make us more efficient and effective. Well, the city of Port Huron, the Port Huron Police Department has done all it's can to implement Clemis on its behalf. Unfortunately, other departments or other agencies haven't migrated as well to Clemis and have had problems with their implementation, and that has held us back. And it's actually severely hampering us. We still have a central dispatch center that's run on a different software called Tri-Tec or the old Visioneer product, and the back part of the process is all run there. Everything out in field is under Clemis, the reporting system, everything else, so basically I have to try to draw from two systems that don't see eye to eye. So it makes it very difficult. I'm hoping, we've been scheduled to go to full implementation of Clemis three times now, and three times it's been put off. Three times I've trained the entire staff, three times we've ready for this, and three times we've swung and missed. I'm hoping sometime early spring or summer that the county will be ready to go to a full implementation of Clemis. All the other law enforcement agencies in the county, including the sheriff, are in the same boat as us. We're all waiting for that final shoe to fall, and that'll be the central dispatch center. So as I move forward, I want to note here, calls for service decreased from 2014 to 2.9%. That's always a positive thing. Police reports decreased 14.1%, and I indicated you the difference of what a call for service is and what a CR or a CS is. If you look in the annual report, you'll see that I noted and spelled those out, and it kind of explains why we're trying to get away from having to do a report for everything. So that's a positive there. As we look here, I want to explain a couple of these numbers. First of all, criminal sexual conduct, there's an increase of 22.8%. What I would suggest to the councils, if you look, I try to look at things, and not just in a one-year span, but when I have available statistics in a five-year or 10-year, and how it trends. And I look historically, we are around 100 CSCs a year. Now, I would like to have it a lot less than that, but historically, that's where we're at. I think last year was an aberration at 79, and we're closer to what we generally have. So as I look at that, I don't like the increase, I certainly like to lower it, but in looking at a five-year trend, that's generally where we report at per year. Homicides, we had an increase of one, so it looks at 100% increases, drastic. Obviously, we have very little impact in that area. Arsons, a 50% increase, and this is an increase that I expected, because what we did is we put together the police and the fire scene investigations in an attempt to learn or determine where cases of arsons have occurred more readily. As an example, there was a recently fire on Miller Street that the investigation's been ongoing for quite some time. We recently secured a warrant for the homeowner's arrest. I believe he's fled to a foreign country, and we're waiting extradition from Lebanon. But there's a case where we put the police and fire investigators to death together, also brought in some private investigators, worked through the crime lab, and got the results. So we're finding a lot more arsons, what I'm saying. It's 50% increases a lot, but you're talking five crimes. I think that makes a difference. Auto theft, a little bit of a decrease of 9.8%, which is welcomed by the community. Home invasions, this is near, I think, where you're going to see the effects of our policing efforts. A 13.4% decrease from the year before. Look at the trending we're doing from 2011 all the way to 2015, trending down. Robberies, a big decrease, again, 28.6% decrease. We're working hard to stop the effect of robberies, and I'd like you to note, and I think people have noticed, if you commit a robbery in the city of Port Huron, there's a pretty good chance you're going to get caught, especially if you committed on video with a machete, there's 100% chance. Damage property crimes, down 14.5%. Look at the trending. Larceny's down 12.6%. Again, I'd like you to look at the trending. We're trending down in those Part I crimes that affect our neighborhoods. That's all positive information. Charged assaults is statistically even. You see, there was two, so we'd like to call that a win. We're flat there. I'd like to see a decrease in the amount of assaults in the city, but unfortunately, we still have a problem that we result to violence when we have issues. Juvenile adult arrests, down 19.4%. That's a positive. Traffic violations, down 15.6%. I believe a lot of that was a problem with the implementation of Clemis. We went to new ticketing, they're both electronic, but the processes to get to writing the ticket electronically, there were issues with that. Parking violations, down 30.5%. I've asked the officers to refocus on different types of patrols, and candidly, we've let the parking go in terms of snow removal, unless we know that we're going to have a winter storm bearing down on us, and we may not have a dusting for a week. I didn't see a reason for the officers to be writing tickets for parking and snow enforcement when it was 60 degrees during the day, and it was going to be 58 degrees at night, and they've taken that to heart. OWI arrests, an increase of 20.4%. I've asked our officers to refocus and look for OUID and OWI. They've taken that to heart. Accidents, a slight decrease of 1.8%. As you see, it's just a handful of accidents. Injuries, an increase of 1.3%. It's just a couple, two more from the year before. Fatal accidents, unfortunately, an increase of two. That's always tragic. Strong traffic enforcement generally has an impact on those type of things. In both those increases, there were prosecution in those cases. Now for the fire department. What I'd like you to note here is the same time period, pretty much if the police department's busy, the fire department's busy, and we follow along those same time periods. Same thing with the hours of the day and the days of the week. Sunday's their slow day, and as you can see, kind of unusual, Wednesday's their busiest There's a couple of interesting things on the fire side I'd like you to see. There was a fire at 822 Howard Street. You see the crews working there. Another one at 315 15th Street, where they're venting a roof. A lot of kids that come to our fire stations, we try to do as much public contacts as possible. I'm going to show you a statistic here shortly that shows that we've dropped in our public contact hours, and I'm going to give you a reason why, and that's a new fire command vehicle that was bought last year. This is something I think you'll find interesting. Alarms by district. We'll do, say, Station 3 first, a 26.9% decrease from the year before. Central Station, a 28.3% decrease from the year before. And Station 4, 35.8 decrease from the year before. If you recall, I changed the matrix on our response and how we respond. We originally responding to all priority levels, 1, 2, and 3. I changed it in about June, and it went into effect in late June, early July, and we monitored and tinkered with it. We allowed only a response for priority ones, which were life-threatening, heart attack, stroke, stop breathing, CPR, severe body trauma. And then I tinkered it and allowed a good majority of level twos, which were more allowed as seizures, those that we couldn't determine for heart attack, with trouble breathing, that where we thought we could provide a life-saving type of resources. But you can see, cutting back on the medicals has changed our impact and allowed us to save those resources that we were spending more, where we would send a ladder truck for somebody that perhaps had an ankle injury or something of that nature. That was on top of sending an advanced life support unit. So I think that's made an impact in our resources. Fire inspections are up from the previous year, a 32.7% increase. We've detailed these back towards each station, so they have the time and the capability to do fire inspections. So we've sent them back out into the field to do that work, in addition with a fire marshal. I want you to look at the three-year call comparison, and as, again, I'll try to show you that. EMS and fire calls, as you can see, EMS calls continue to go down. This year, they've gone down again. A total call decrease of 29.5% from 2014. Fires are down again. I think that's a result of a couple of things. One is the medical matrix we put into place. Two is the strong fire safety program that we work to preserve in the community. We do a good job on inspections. And three, I have to tell you, is the work of the firefighters themselves. They do a bang-up job in responding to the incidents, and they knock them down right away. Apartment training hours, there's a decrease of 32.7%. We went through a little bit of a mini reorganization with the losing of five senior people, so we had to move some bodies around and do things a little bit differently, and I would expect that number to pick back up this year. Public education contacts were also down a 71% as we moved bodies around and did things differently. And I've provided reports to the council where we've come to agreements with the union. We've changed how we schedule and vacation picks and done some other things. We'll be revamping our public education contacts. One of the things, our goals for the year, is to start doing CPR classes and other things out in the public with our staff. Code enforcement, I gave you the last minute, the last meeting, but I'll put those back up there. Obviously, I'm very proud of our code enforcement effort. I think we've done a great job, and as you can see, we spelled it out the last meeting, but I think we're headed in the right direction. And we're trending. I like to call it trending. We're heading in the right direction. We're taking less complaints, and we're solving complaints where sometimes years old or decades old. There's a picture of Marcy. She does it all. She's out not only abating the blight issue, but as you can see, that one house is really a picture of our success as a code enforcement unit. If there's any other questions in regards to our activities for the Department of Public Safety for 2015, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thanks, Chief. Is there any questions from council?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes, Chief, on page three. First of all, let me commend you on this is a great report, the detail, the data is there. But I just want a little bit of explanation. You gave explanations on some, but you know how data tells a story. So what's the story behind the calls for service? Why was that down 2.9? What do you think attributed to that?
Well, that's a relatively small number. Generally, calls for service stay pretty good. That's a good indicator, though. We're taking less calls for service in certain areas. People are utilizing other resources, perhaps for their calls. They may be calling other agencies or other, and I don't just mean law enforcement agencies. There may be a need for police in less areas. That's a positive in our mind, because then we can work towards more proactive law enforcement in different areas. It's a slight amount. Now, if I see that trending over a number of years, I would say that's a very positive result, and we're working towards a goal of less law enforcement in terms of criminal apprehension, and work towards more proactive things in the community.
Okay, great. And then also, I'm on page four, the home invasions, you know how everybody want to be safe, you know, buying burglar alarms and everything, so what's the story behind that one?
Well, I think that's the work of the police department and the detective bureau that have worked hard. We've done a couple of things. We put together what we call an intelligence briefing with area departments. With Clemis, we now compare, we sit weekly and go over home invasions and those robberies and those type of crimes, and we talk about what suspects we're looking at in other communities, what kind of crimes they have, and then we sit down and compare them, and we see if we can find different types of solvability factors that are alike, meaning, did a person come in through a window versus a door? Did they use gloves, or did they leave fingerprints? So there are solvability factors, where's the properties that ever located? Is it located in a pawn shop, or those type of things? And then we work these cases together. Also, if you recall, I've been doing a number of different activities in the neighborhoods with police sweeps and that type of thing. I know you recall, last summer of the, we had helicopters that assisted us in a couple of different things. Those things make an impact. People don't generally want to break into the house if the police are sweeping the block or there's a helicopter above with the light on, and they make an impact. And these type of crimes, where there's larcenies and damage to property and robberies and home invasions, those type of police activities proactive are making an impact in the community.
Okay. And just lastly, Chief, given this report and everything, what really keeps you up overnight in your duties?
James.
I was going to say, is that a crime?
No, the real answer, the real answer, besides James, is...
Oh, good, besides James.
The real answer is the drug abuse problem we have in the community.
Drug problem.
I mean, the drug abuse problem, the addiction problem we have in the community with heroin and methamphetamine, and now crystal methamphetamine, drives, is the main driver of a lot of these different categories. The home invasions, the larcenies, the assaults, and the robberies. The vast majority of those are driven by drug addiction, the vast majority.
Do you have any countermeasures in the future that you envision to turn the current...
Well, I'm hopeful that the people will support the millage for the DTF. That's the only tool now that's a counteroffensive in terms of going about that. If you look under the stats of the NET team, they've been very proactive and done very well. But their main job is not the focus of narcotics. Their main job is the focus of the robberies and home invasions and the other large cases. Collectively, if we work together, it can't be solved just by the city of Port Huron. It has to be all communities working together in concert. The key to that is education, to be candid with you. We have to put just as much effort into education with our kids, but also programs that allow people to cleanse themselves and get healthy. If the community doesn't work towards those programs, there's no way I can ever arrest ourselves out of those issues. It's not going to happen. Corrections is not the issue. It's more term treatment and education. Education is the key.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Rep.
Thank you. Anybody, yes, Councilmember Harris.
I just got one question here. This was kind of a target that we had for the future, was increasing the number of online reporting. But looking at the stats here for online reporting, and...
Strangely went down.
It went up, we had 554 calls in '13, 666 in 2014, and it went way down in 2015.
The implementation of Clemis.
Is that because of the difficulty? I know that there's instances where people have had difficulty navigating.
The system was actually down for a month and a half, almost two months, because of the implementation of Clemis. Clemis is a good thing. Clemis brings St. Clair County and this police department into this century. I was using Clemis 25 years ago, and it's just now coming here. So I'm trying to drag us into this century. The problem is, not everybody in the county is ready to go into this century. Without calling out my partners too much, we need full implementation, then we can take advantage of those. Like, I'd like to get a number of our calls for service pushed off to the computer reporting or call reporting, because that frees up officers to take more serious calls. As you can see, when it gets very busy, 2,000 calls, they're stacked, and I want to cut those times back. So as we work forward with Clemis, I hope that that goes back up and we can even out the call load.
It's today's tool.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
Chief, the sweeps you did along with the Michigan State Police, are those represented in these statistics?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, okay.
And the state police also keeps them.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam, I have a quick question. This data you use is calendar year versus calendar year, correct?
Correct.
And so the implementations that were done in the July budget are fiscal years. So in the reduction of the fire calls, we see an average between 26 and 35% year over year, but that only counts for about half the year, correct?
Correct.
So in the coming fiscal year, we can assume that we'll see about a 50%, 60% reduction in calls?
I think we'll see a larger reduction than what's supposed to be. I think we'll see a larger reduction than what's posted here for the six months. Now, I did tweak it to allow some more priority twos because I felt we were missing some, but overall, I believe we'll see a larger reduction than what reported for the six-month period. That's correct.
Thank you. I don't think anyone else. Thank you for a good report and...
Thank you.
Thank you. Presentation number four.
Blue Water Transportation will explain the bus millage renewal proposal scheduled for voter consideration on May third, two thousand and sixteen.
Good evenings, council members and public, and thank you for allowing us to come here tonight and tell you a little bit about Blue Water Area Transit and our upcoming...
Do you maybe want to say your title in that because...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jim Wilson, General Manager, Blue Water Area Transit. And with me is Dave McElroy, our Director of Finance.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're here to tell you about the millage renewal election that's coming up on May third. It is a renewal. It is not an increase and it is necessary to continue our existing services. Our millage rate currently is point six two one four. It has declined from original point seven five mils years back due to the Headley rollback measure. We are looking for a four-year renewal and it generates about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year from the city of Port Huron. Port Huron is part of our countywide coordinated and consolidated transportation systems that consists of several components. We have our regular service in Port Huron and Fort Grashit. We have new service that started in Marysville and Birchville and Port Huron townships. We have the JARQ-funded service, which is a hundred percent federal and state-funded service for our late-night extended hours and our commuter route to Macomb County. We have transportation that we operate for three nonprofit agencies in St. Clair County. And then we have transportation operated by about eleven other nonprofit agencies that we obtain federal and state operating assistance for to subsidize their transportation. City of Port Huron was one of the founding members of Blue Water Area Transit back in nineteen seventy-six. This year is our fortieth anniversary and it's also the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of public trans in the Port Huron area. So we're very excited about this landmark year. Total millage roughly over thirty-nine years that we've collected in today's dollars from the city of Port Huron, about thirteen point five million. That has provided, again in today's dollars, about seventy-two million dollars in bus service for the city of Port Huron. And today, the city's share of our net assets is about twenty-one point five million. Here's just some operating statistics. Our total cost per passenger is about three dollars and six cents. Our total cost per hour is seventy dollars and fifty-six cents. But of that, your millage is only paying fifty-seven cents per passenger and thirteen dollars, fourteen cents per vehicle hour, and the rest is covered with federal and state The two founding members, Port Huron and Fort Grashit, love you the same millage rate and receive pretty close to their fair share of the service. As you'll see, the city of Port Huron puts in roughly fifty-nine point three percent of the money and gets about fifty-nine point six percent of the passenger trips and a little under fifty-eight percent of the vehicle hours. So it works out as a very equitable arrangement between Port Huron and Fort Grashit. So we provide service to both the city of Port Huron and the greater county area. Total passenger trips in just Port Huron last year was over six hundred thousand, but our total operation was over one point five million. Those included these trips, eighty-three thousand trips for seniors, almost a quarter million total trips for seniors, one hundred and thirty-six thousand for handicap. Oh, you can see the numbers. So, keep going. We have, you know, Port Huron again is a part of a very coordinated and consolidated countywide operation that we're providing now. So the city of Port Huron expenses for the service in the city about one point eight million. That's out of a total of ten point eight million. You'll see the largest section there of, in the pie chart, is for the agency service, both the agencies that we operate service for and the agencies who service, we subsidize. And the ten point eight million does not include roughly three million dollars a year of depreciation that's associated with our assets, federally funded assets. You'll see, again, what we operated, service for community mental health, the community action agency in the YMCA, for a total expenses of two point eight million. And we received about one point three million of federal and state subsidies to help offset the cost of that service. Then the second group of numbers is the agencies that we subsidize the service, they operate. And in total, agency transportation expenses, five point eight million. And of that, two point six million is covered by federal and state operating assistance that we receive on their behalf. So we try to get every dollar we can for our community. We recently persuaded MDOT to continue the JARQ funding for at least another year. We historically got a very large share of the JARQ funding that was available statewide and so we were very anxious to see that continue. And we've been successful. So there you'll see, we've got one point one five million, excuse me, one point one one five million. And the next closest community, Jackson, four hundred thousand. That was an annual amount. We've been receiving this funding since two thousand and seven, so it's been a very good source of service for the community. And we have our new transit center that opened in November. It was a nine point eight million project. We paid eight hundred and thirty thousand for the parking lot and made roughly, well, I just found out it was really closer to three point four million dollars of improvements to McMoran Boulevard, Superior Mall and the remaining parts of the parking lot that we've turned control back over to the city of. So we continue to look for federal grants. We also did get a grant to help this community college put in a bus turnout lane just a couple of years ago. So we've been happy to use our position of, with access to these sorts of funds to try to help the community as best we can. And we're committed to controlling costs and reducing air pollutions. So we have the largest fleet of CNG-powered buses in the state. They're much cleaner than diesel and they're, much of the CNG is domestically produced. Our largest buses have lower emissions than your most efficient cars. And we're also the largest CNG producer in the state of Michigan with four public refueling stations throughout the county. And most of our CNG-related assets were one hundred percent federal and state funded, much of that with funds that were geared towards improving air quality. And we're continuing to look for other ways to enhance our efficiency and reduce emissions.
Yeah, I was trying to get that last slide. I skipped it.
Which one was that?
Oh.
Can you draw up the last slide for me?
Sorry.
Maybe it's not there. Is it, is it there? Oh. Well, you can just speak to the last slide. That would help. You know what you put on there, so...
Yes, it was, just thanking you for your time on behalf of our commissioners, Anita Ashford and Lyndon...
Oh, that's the most important slide. You can't find that slide?
It's right there.
Wait a minute. Oh, okay, all right.
There you go.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry for that. Any, any questions from anyone?
Does our council have any questions for Mr. Wilson?
I don't have any questions, but Rico certainly is my alternate on the commission and we actually represent you very well. I mean, when I can't be there, Rico really steps in. And it was so important for us to direct or suggest that the, that you speak to us tonight about the upcoming millage because we have so much on there and we just don't want to get it wrong because I'm sure nobody wants to spend any extra money or whatever, but we have a whole lot of good things that are going to be coming up, not just the education in school, but also this renewal. And they're not asking for any more money. They're just asking to maintain. And so it is very, everything is critical, but we would certainly like your support on May the third. Can't tell you how to vote, but we'd like for you to get out there and vote in favor of renewal. I almost forgot my role here. Yeah, okay. But, but my fellow councilmembers, do you have any questions or anything?
Anybody have any questions?
Of me as a commissioner, I'd be happy to oblige you.
I don't think so. You do a good job representing the city and thank you for the presentation. I think that's a lot of good information.
Thank you.
Thank you. We shall move on to public hearings. Public hearing number one.
To hear comments on the proposed Michigan National Resource Trust Fund grant application in the amount of two hundred and ninety-five thousand to assist with Pine Grove Park renovations and improvements, following the hearing, council will consider a resolution to authorize the submission of the grant application and if the funds are awarded, authorize the acceptance of the offer and provide for the required local funding match.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council on public hearing
Mayor and city council, I just wanted to kind of explain the grant application a little bit and what we're seeking funds for. Obviously, Pine Grove Park is our next connection, I believe, and I, you know, a lot of our staff believes the same thing, between downtown and the convention center. It's one of our premier parks that many visitors visit every single year. So we're looking for, in our grant application, we are looking to provide more accessible pathways and then, oh, Jim, we, throughout the park so that it's accessible for everyone to get to all areas of the park. We're looking to do a scenic outlook, which would help us to provide another thirty-one parking spaces, which is much needed in this park. We're also looking to do a new restroom and concession similar to the one that we're doing at Lakeside, this one with only four bathrooms. I have heard a little bit of feedback as far as like saying, well, in the past, the restrooms there didn't work out that well, just to clarify that. We'd like to put this particular restroom and concession building somewhere out in the open, adjacent to the Ball Diamond and also to the playground area. So it'll be out in the open for everybody to see. It would be open similar to the beaches where the concession area, when it's open, that's when the bathrooms would be available. But it just, the plaza that we have in mind to do there would be just a little bit, you know, stepping up the park a little bit as far as instead of having outside visitors come to the present Port of John Center there, basically. And I think it just adds another, you know, to a beautiful park that we have in our system. So we'd also be looking at benches, we'd be looking at new trash cans, basically doing a facelift for that park altogether. As many of you know, it's used for a lot of ball tournaments. St. Clair Community College uses it for their home field. Corrigan Competitive Sports uses it and just the, you know, fishermen, it just gets a lot of use. So that's why we're choosing the next one. We're very blessed to have some of the parks that we do and we just need to put our ring, you know, our hat in the ring as far as grants go. So this is our next target, Pine Grove Park, so.
The restrooms, is that going to be open just during certain hours or...
Yeah, so it'd be similar to the beaches, so it'd be...
So they won't be twenty-four hours?
No, they'd be closed when the concession area closes, which at the beaches is between seven and eight o'clock at night and that's when we'd close those as well, unless there was a special van, obviously, or something in the park that would deem it to stay open longer.
Mayor, concession stands, Lions Club?
They have put in their notice this year, after all these years, that they're having difficulty getting volunteers. So unfortunately, they will no longer be there, yes.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lewandowski.
How much is the local funding match?
Hundred and twenty thousand, which we would use, we won't hear about this until, so this would be like a two thousand seventeen, eighteen project. So we would use our county millage money to leverage, trying to leverage those dollars a little bit better and work on some of the perks that are needing a little facelift, so.
Is that going to be enough? It sounds like for what you want to do is going to cost a lot more than what...
Well, it will take care of the restroom and concession. It will take care of the, the accessible walkways. It'll also take care of the, we did a master plan of it and also just a cost, it'll take care of some picnic tables, some trash receptacles. But you wouldn't see any like playground updates at this point and stuff like that. So we would be able to accomplish that with this grant.
Thank you.
And, yes, Councilmember...
So this is, this is being done in phases?
Yes, yes. We feel like the first phase is the most important with the restrooms, concessions.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Rep. Did you have a question, Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, I guess my question here is I was looking at the plan map and it looks like we're going to have a little bit more of a congested area with, where the concessions stand and the lavatories are going to be in the same spot. And I also looking at, you talked about how many parking spots and I see like twelve or fifteen on here.
The map that you're looking at is the ADA parking spots. It's not, all of them are not on that particular map and hopefully maybe we can, we do have the other one, but it will allow those, the one that you're looking at is specifically, we had to outline how many ADA accessibles and that's what you're looking at there. But the total number will be thirty-one overall.
Okay. I think it's, I think it's a great project. I just, I just hope the end result doesn't result in some congestion with putting all that stuff along the first baseline or behind the bleachers at first.
Our plan will be if you can kind of vision where the Lions is now, that's where a lot of the utilities are, is my understanding. And that is just a preliminary, like Lakeside looks a lot different than what we originally, you know, that's a preliminary and I agree with you. We want to keep it where the fishermen can see it, where the Ball Diamond and also for the playground as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would, wishes to speak to public hearing number
Good evening. Dale Voss, I'm the Director of Academic Advising and Athletics at SC Four and as Mrs. Windsor said, we use that field as our home field for softball and have for over twenty-five years in a partnership with the city and the Recreation Department. We love being there. It's, as most of you know, it's a beautiful setting and beautiful setting for a softball field and I think you see that with the Fourth of July tournament that's there every year as well. I just would like to encourage you to, to be in favor of this. I think the restrooms, the concessions would really enhance, from our standpoint, the ball field, speaking just specifically to that. And then the parking spaces are very much needed. Too often I go there and see people parking on the, on the grass and I, and I think to myself... Too often I go there and see people parking on the, on the grass, and I, and I think to myself, well, that's a good way to ruin a park is to ruin the green areas. So I'd really encourage you to, to look favorably on this, and as a, as a citizen, even for the entire park, not just the ball field. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, my name is Terry Ruff. I'm the director of Portier and Competitive Sports here for the Recreation Department for the adult softball leagues, and also the district commissioner for the Michigan Amateur Softball Association. We run all the recreation softball programs for City Rec all during the summer months, from first part of May until end of October. We also host many tournaments at Pine Grove Park, whether it's our July 4th tournament, the state softball tournaments for the Michigan Amateur Softball Association, plus over the years, we've hosted three national tournaments that have been played at Pine Grove Park back in 1975, 2012, and 2013. And this year, in Labor Day weekend, we also host the National Modified Tournament back in Port Huron. The teams that come in all love that park and our city. It's one of the premier parks to play at in the country with such a beautiful setting. The only thing we've ever gotten out, we always do a tournament critique, and usually it's the bathrooms. And, but it's a beautiful park, and just proposal that just, we support the renovations and improvements for Pine Grove Park, and we hope the council goes forward for not only the softball players, but for the people that love the park, the boat watchers, the fishermen, and just people that come and enjoy that park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number one? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number one closed and ask for a motion to authorize the submission of the grant application.
So moved. Support.
That would be Mayor Pro Tem Archibald with support by councilmember Ashford. Is there any discussion? We will take the vote.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to public hearing number two.
To hear comments on the proposed Michigan National Resource Trust Fund grant application in the amount of $50,000 to assist with the Lakeside Park picnic shelter project. Following the hearing, council will consider a resolution to authorize the submission of the grant application, and if funds are awarded, authorize the acceptance of the offer and provide for the required local fund match.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number two?
Mayor Rep and city council, as you'll see, this pavilion is in two different spots on your agenda, both in the passport grant area and also in the trust fund area. This is to start Phase Two at Lakeside and to construct a 24 by 34 covered pavilion in the park. It will also give us access with walkways again to this area. It will also give us recycling bins and other amenities that go around the pavilion area. To be, it, it's just continuing the work at Lakeside. To be honest, I was, we were only going to apply at Pine Grove Park. The DNR is one of the people that, they love Lakeside, and they said, I hope you're going to apply for something for Phase Two. They recommended that we put it in both pots, and I think it'd be a great addition. We get calls all the time for weddings, picnics, reunions, and it just will continue to add to the amenities that we're already doing in the park. So it's just a way to continue on with Phase Two. I think it'd be a great asset to what we're already started there, so.
Thank you. Yes, councilmember Ashford.
And the local match here is?
This one is, depending on what pot we, you know, if we were approved, would either be 30,000 or 35,000, depending on which grant would get it.
Oh, okay.
And again, our hope was to continue the walkways. I know many people are probably thinking like, well, Phase Two, you know, the park, parking lot and different, and the entrance and different things like that, but we always got to match up what goes with, and this particular grant looks for recreational opportunities. So that's why we felt Phase Two, we would try to put a ring in the hat, you know, put our hat in the ring for a pavilion. And, you know, we get a lot of bird watchers there, a lot of different groups. We're doing yoga and paddle boards and all kinds of things, so it just would offer a great gathering spot in that park. And actually, we don't have, in any of our highly trafficked parks besides the gazebo at Pine Grove, there really is no picnic areas like this, so.
And they called you?
We met with them, yes, just to see what some of their priorities were. They actually brought up Lakeside Park, and anywhere I go to present on Lakeside, they, you know, will comment about how they've been there, and it is a beautiful piece of property for a city, like, to own. So we just want to continue to improve it.
And I'm sorry, Mayor Rep, for this line. And then, when we do apply for these grants, it's not always that we get them.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear.
And it's a very competitive process.
But it is an opportunity.
Yes.
You know, to throw your hat in there. Okay.
And we might as well leverage some of the dollars that we do get from the millage to do these improvements.
For Nancy Sitzstone, is there anybody else? Councilmember Lewandowski?
Is that the final design of the one we're going to build?
No, that's just an example. I mean, it's similar to what we would look at doing, but.
I was looking, does it seem like that costs $70,000, $80,000?
It's actually in our range. We do, we did get a price on that. It's 40,000 to construct it. It's just all the, the walkways and the picnic tables, and that's the kind of things that add up, but be similar to that.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Nancy, just to commend you about, these are jewels of our community, but just to see them being enhanced as you have, and this change, the changes going through, and you're getting more and more confident, I think, in terms of those grants that you're, you're going after.
Yes, and I've had a lot of help on this, so I'm not going to lie. I have a lot of people that help behind the scenes and.
I realize that, but it's just, it's there. I mean, as Mr. Ruff said, and he spent multiple years as helping out our City Rec program at Pine Grove Park, I mean, I'm sure enhancing it that way just is nothing but good thing, a good thing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying that. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number two?
Good evening. Sharon Bender, South Boulevard, Port Huron. I am certain that a certain young lady would be here to urge your support for both of these proposals, but she is sick. So I will speak for her to say that we are gratified that you are considering accessible pathways, for example, for people who are in wheelchairs, et cetera, who have, who are pushy walkers, whatever. And the fact that there's a potential for more encouragement of families to, to have their reunions in the park, this is just wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number two? Declare public hearing number two closed and ask for a motion to authorize submission of the grant application. Pro Tem Archibald and councilmember Ashford. Any discussion?
Mayor Rep, just one comment.
Yes, councilmember Harris.
I, I don't want to underestimate, underestimate the value of this pavilion because of the success rate of the county parks of what they've had with their pavilion, and I just really think this, this is really huge. And I think you're going to be overwhelmed on the number of people that are going to want to use these facilities, so be prepared.
There you go.
The county ones, you have to reserve almost a year in advance.
What?
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We shall move on now to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address any items on our agenda or other city business this evening, please come forward, give us your name, and you do have four minutes.
Sharon Bender again, South Boulevard, Port Huron. And my, my comment is, again, for someone else who is also sick. The comment is not for my particular neighborhood, but just in general, to find out the city's policy with regard to items such as tree trimmings and that sort of thing that are left out from one season to the next. In my neighborhood, we do have some occasions where people put their trash out early, not to, you know, not, it's supposed to be 4:00 the day before, but some people do that. I'm aware that some people who have to hire someone to do their work for them, you know, there are situations, and I'm sure that, that the Public Works Department works with people with that regard. But for someone who routinely leaves their things out, or routinely puts their items out early, I think that that needs to be addressed. And I, and I have been sighted, and I took down my garage because it wasn't unsightly piece of junk, but, but I don't want to give you the impression that I think we should be harsh with people, but I just think it, it would be good to have a friendly reminder for the, for people who do this. Not, I'm not talking about people that are going on vacation and it's, you know, those types of situations, but thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. We will follow up on that. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? You come forward with your name. You have four minutes.
I'll Steve Pessuski, City of Port Huron, owner of Military Street Music Cafe. I just wanted to make sure that everybody did get a packet that I had, had dropped off for our proposed changes for the music cafe.
I have it in front of, I think everybody in council has one in front of them.
I had eight or nine copies delivered up to the city, or to the city offices, make sure everybody did get a copy to see what our proposed changes were, to try to be a better neighbor and, and make some, you know, like I say, make some positive changes to stay a member of the community. That's all. Okay?
Yes.
Did everybody get a copy?
I do, yeah. We all have it in front of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening? I will declare public comment closed. We shall move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Amos, is there a second? Support. Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. The items on the consent agenda, we received and filed a copy of the completed 2016 assessment roll, authorized and approved the submission of the annual action plan for program year 2016 to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for their review and approval, approved in agreement with L'Oreal Ross Sterling Entertainment to provide the event production services for the 2016 Port Huron Rockin' in the Rivers music event, and approving the appointment of Catherine Kuhn to the Beautification Commission to fill a vacancy with a term to expire January 30th, 2019. With that, we will move on to, from the city manager, number one.
Accepting the proposal from Pitney Bowes Incorporated in the amount of $10,617.34 for the replacement of the mailing system at the municipal office center.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, is there discussion?
Is there explanation?
Mr. Brennan?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. Our current postage meter was purchased in 2004, and as of this coming December, our maintenance contract will expire, and Pitney Bowes is no longer going to service that machine. On a typical day, we process anywhere from 200 to 500 pieces of mail. That's over 60,000 pieces a year. And the machine we're looking at automatically weighs each letter, applies the correct postage, and seals the letter. Doesn't take it out to the mailbox. We have to do that ourselves, but in, in addition, the machine totals the postage cost by each city department, so that each department can properly manage their postage budget. And as kind of a bonus, Pitney Bowes is offering through March 31st, this coming Thursday, to take our old machine with a $500 trade-in allowance. So this is about $4,000 to $5,000 less than we paid for the last one in 2004, so technology's made, made the price come down somewhat, so.
I'm sure you were anticipating this, right?
Yes, it was in the budget. It was actually budgeted for $13,700, so we're getting it quite a bit less than we looked for in the budget, and it was actually one of the finance department's goals for this year is to replace our postage meter, so.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Brennan? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Number two.
Accepting the proposal from Play Environments Incorporated in the amount of $13,350 for new playground structure at 19th and Division Park using grant funds received from the St. Clair County Community Foundation.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Boy. Councilmember Amos, and seconded by councilmember Ashford. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Lewandowski.
I don't know if I should wait later to this one, but I'm just curious what the big difference is between the, from city manager two and three. Why one's $3,000 more?
They're two different parks, aren't they?
I know it's two different parks.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm just talking to myself, not to you. That's all it is.
I'm just curious what the difference is between, from city manager number two and three. Why one's $3,000 more than, than the next?
So you mean between, oh, I see, two different pieces.
I understand it's two different ones.
Yeah, one's a whole structure that's going to be at 19th and Division, which I think we have a picture of, and one, the, the second piece is something that no one has, so we'll see again.
Wrong picture.
There we go. This is the piece that will be going at 19th and Division. That particular piece is rotting from the bottom up, so we were able to get a grant to replace it, and this piece will be going there. The sec, number three, this, the piece that you're talking about, that piece will be one of the pieces that we'll be replacing at Lincoln Park, that we got a grant for $20,000 there. So we want, the current structure at Lincoln Park is in good shape, and the residents really like it still, so we're going to keep it there. But I've been searching for something that's different that no one else has, and this is that piece. This is called the cruise line, and it's supposed to give the feeling of flying, so it's good for kids' volabilities, and it fits up to six kids, so that's the difference. One's a structure and one is in, one of the pieces that will be going at Lincoln Park, so.
Thank you.
Nice touch.
Thank you. And these were totally both paid for by grants, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Is there any other questions?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, councilmember Ruiz.
Do we install those? Who the company we're purchasing from, do they install them?
They install.
Thank you.
Are we just on number two?
Yes, we're still dealing.
Okay, why can't we just take them both together, since you discussed them both together, or is that?
We can, if that's okay with the mover, which was councilmember Amos?
Yes, that's okay.
And supported by you?
Yeah, it's okay with me, because you discussed it.
And we have already talked about the second one, so yes. So we're really dealing with the number, item number two and three at the same time. The second one, but we should probably say what it is, because the audience does not know, so if you'd read that one, please.
Accepting the proposal from Play World in the amount of $10,700 for a new playground structure at Lincoln Park using grant funds received from the St. Clair County Community Foundation.
Okay. So is there any further discussion on either one of these items?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to say, if you look at so many times in our, in our council packets, the name St. Clair County Community Foundation, I just think if we take a moment just to, to think of where our community would be if we didn't have our foundation and all the donors. Since I've been here in just two short years, I have seen so many times the community foundation's name on charitable contributions. I just think I'd like to thank them and all their donors who make this possible, because this community would not be where it's at without our foundation. Truly is a community foundation.
And I think they moved downtown, too, didn't they?
They did open their new offices.
Their new office, yeah.
Downtown next to the.
Great asset to the city.
Yes, and you're very right. So nice for bringing that up. Thank you. Yes, councilmember Lewandowski.
Quick question for Nancy. Is there a weight limit on that string thing? Can I get on?
Want to fly on? You want to fly on? We will take the vote on items two and three.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. And then we have items four and five, which have been noted to be taken together, so if you would do those both, please.
Accepting the single-source quote from Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated in the amount of $25,530 for the purchase and implantation of the ARC GIS hardware and software to maintain an in-house geographic information system for public utilities to be used by the Department of Public Works. And accepting the single-source quote from Lucidity Incorporated in the amount of $24,250 to purchase and implement the license upgrades to the existing sanitary sewer collection system maintenance activity software program used by the Department of Public Works Utility Services.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Harris?
You know, I've looked at these items and stuff, and I guess the prob, two problems I have with them, number one, it guarantees that without coming to council, that they'll be able to, whatever their yearly financial fee is, is that'll be paid, and I guess the other thing that really bothers me, we have the RFP sharing service now with Michigan Municipal League, and I just think this is probably about the perfect time that we would, could go with this RFP service that Michigan Municipal League provides us, and, and maybe we could do something better with these, with this bid for these processes.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I'll go quick, I'll give a quick explanation, to be quite frank, this is very technical, so I'm going to ask Jim, as well as Lenny, both to, to discuss this. First and foremost, we can, we currently use Lucidity throughout our operations, and so this is just to get the upgrades and then continue the licenses for that. The cost of buying a whole new system would be much more than this, and the GIS system is a component of that. Jim, if you'd like, this is your wheelhouse here. Between Jim and Lenny, God help us, we'll probably get an answer, so.
Pardon?
Paul Speaker.
Madam Mayor and Council, let me just talk first about the public work component, and my friend, Mr. Brennan, will fill a lot of details on the technical. The Lucidity program is one that the city has been using for well over 10 years. It is required by our MDEQ permit to give a report every year on the operation maintenance of our system, and the Lucidity software does that. However, the software that we have is getting, getting to the end of its useful life, and we're looking to upgrade this to the web-based version that is going to be used going forward. Now, the reason why you have both of these items together is that the Lucidity program is tied to the GIS. The ARC GIS program, for the last 16 years, has been built and maintained and updated by our environmental consultant, Tetra Tech, during this, for the CSO project. Well, the CSO program is coming to a close, we only have one item left to work on, and it's always been the plan to take this GIS system and bring it in-house, so that we can maintain and operate it in-house. The Lucidity program refers to the GIS, in fact, it reports its information to and from the GIS database, which includes 165 miles of water main, 240 miles of sewer lines, as well as all of our roadways, and these are updated in, in the GIS geographic information system in a very detailed manner, in the proper format, that we are now going to be able to control them and maintain them in-house. So the two really go together, and as the, the chief might say, this is going to put the utilities division firmly into the 20th century. So we're hoping that you will, that was supposed to be a joke.
This is punchline.
As a janitor should say, please laugh, no.
Lenny, real, real quick, Tetra Tech, Tetra Tech is unwilling to continue hosting our GIS, correct?
Well, they've never intended to, and they do not, for all of their clientele, provide hosting services beyond the project in which they're working, and the CSO program is the reason they've been working on it, but they're not an ISP, so the program has, has been from the beginning, that when we're finished, the hosting of this system would come to us.
So, was there something to add to that, that you wanted to add, Mr. Brennan?
You've covered it pretty well. There's, there's a couple of IT aspects to this, oops, that have to do with the 21st century. This will allow field-based reporting of the maintenance that's done, the work orders will be put on tablets, and that when they go in the field, they'll have that, and they'll have immediate access to all of the drawings and ASBILs and things like that.
To be paperless.
The goal is to be paperless, I've yet to see it actually happen, but, but a tremendous number of the huge sheets have already been transferred to this system, and in the pilot program are available online to do it. The other, if I might address the Tetra Tech part a little bit, they were only doing the ASBILs and the drawings, they were never doing the maintenance and the work orders, the things that the Lucidity program provides, so that would always be a gap, we would always have to license that. If, if we hired, if Tetra Tech weren't an ISP, or someone else were an ISP, we would still have to license that software for use on those soft, or on their system, so we weren't going to save that piece. Again, this will be, have tablet-based reporting, and a lot of good things for the operations.
Jim, Jim, what would be the cost if, back to Councilman Harris's question, the Lucidity, if we were to go out for a brand-new program and RFP that out for a brand-new system?
Well, since we haven't, it's hard to estimate, but it would be three or four times as much, because really, we're getting an upgrade to an existing piece of software. They're moving it from, from a desktop software to a server-based software, and they, they did that about five years ago. They're no longer supporting it, but it would easily be, you know, $100,000, not, not 50. But again, without quoting it, we don't know that, but, but that would be our estimate.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski?
Jim, you mentioned a tablet-based system, are you going to be coming back and asking us to purchase tablets, too, at some point?
We may, the tablets are $500 or $600 apiece, so we probably won't be, but we...
They get more expensive than that, so I was just curious.
Yeah, we're probably going to use a ruggedized laptop, but there would, there would be other equipment required as we move forward, much like we have for the code enforcement. Another operational advantage is this, the data is located on a, a desktop computer out at the Utilities Building, we're going to put this on a server in the, our data center, where it'll be backed up on a regular basis, and so from, from an operational point of view, it removes a real failure point that we've been worried about for the last, well, I've been worried about nine years about it, but what, anyway.
Any other questions?
I guess the only question that they didn't answer, what, what would you project as the annual cost?
It'll be about 15% of the software cost, so it will be in the area for the two pieces of probably $5,000 each. There are, there are desktop licenses that we currently buy for the ARC GIS already, we have four of those that, that we may not need, they're $500 apiece each year, so there may be some savings, but because as people use more GIS services, they find that they use more GIS services, so I haven't even projected that as a savings, but it's a poss, it's possibly a savings.
Is there any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Aside from that, do we have any other annual fees that we're paying for the, the software now, that...
Yes.
That offsets that, so what are we paying?
Yeah, we're already paying a similar amount in maintenance now.
Roughly the $5,000?
Yeah, for that piece, and we're paying $7,500 for the GIS piece, but that'll be, we'll probably have additional, because we're having additional capabilities, we're going to have additional support requirements. We estimate from that, $7,000.
That is your current cost of Tetra Tech?
Well, it's $12,000 for the server, and about $7,000 a year for the staff to maintain it.
Not to Tetra Tech.
Any other questions? Thank you for your explanations. We will take a vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We will now move on to resolution number one, please.
Adopting the city council's list of goals and priorities for the 2016-17 fiscal year.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, before I open it to discussion, just because that's general on the agenda, I do want to go over kind of briefly the, the goals that were at least the ones that are council, as to be carried out by the city manager, there's certainly other goals that are on that list that are department goals, which are under the city manager's jurisdiction, but there are goals that are under our jurisdiction for him, so I would like to at least for the audience's purpose, briefly go over those. And they're in categories, residents under that category, hosting neighborhood town halls to improve lines of communication with residents, city operations, develop methods and options for reducing unfunded liabilities and annual contribution costs, continue multi-year budgeting to ensure operational stability, develop next year's budget without layoffs or reduction in city services, promote diversity and inclusion in city operations. For downtown goals, continue to work with the developers to see through completion of the Sperry City Flats and YMCA site condo projects, develop a new operation model for the McMoran Arena and Civic Theater, explore our downtown development authority and Main Street partnership. Under shared service agreement, work with adjacent townships on a shared service agreement for canal dredging, which is something that's just recently come up, and I think it's pretty much, almost done. City council, prepare a code of conduct policy for the council, review current code of ethics ordinance for possible revisions, and under tourism, work on a new marketing campaign to promote the city and region to the best, to be the best, for the rest of the state, I'm sorry, to the rest of the state. So that being said, if there's any comments or discussion, I'll open it up.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
Just on the one, hosting the neighborhood town halls, which I'm in favor of, and if this is a goal, is there a, a date associated with this? Is this supposed to happen every quarter? I would like to see something a little bit more concrete, like on the list we got exploring, and I don't see why we have to explore it, and then you just said hosting it, and so in terms of a SMART goal, where, is this every quarter, every other, so we can anticipate when this is supposed to happen?
Mr. Fried has looked into that.
So we've been working with our community development office, and I've also been in communications with the editor and publisher of the Times-Herald to do, have them host the event, but we'd like to break it down, I think the town halls we discussed in the goal session, they're, they're much more effective when they're to a very micro-targeted area, to a certain neighborhood, and so we've been meeting with the community development office to segment off the neighborhoods and which would be the best neighborhoods to target, for instance, the Harrison Point neighborhood, to have a town hall for just the Harrison Point residents, so we can have a very pinpoint conversation about what we're doing in their neighborhood. And so we've got that down to about five or six different targeted areas within the city, we'd like to hit all five or six in the coming year, so that's probably two a quarter, but we'd also like to partner with some outside parties to bring publicity to it, but also work with some of our other stakeholders in the area, say, the Council on Aging, say, the Community Action Agency, there's a lot of different partners who could be at those areas, to not just have a town hall, but also have like a little open house to what we're partnering with together, so we're targeting two a quarter, about that pace. Now, there may be some where we have three or four in one quarter, because it just worked out, that way the weather was nicer, because I don't want to have people walking out in the wintertime, but we're also working, I've had conversations with Jamie Kane, the school superintendent, about opening up those facilities, we can use the schools to host in that, so that's probably the pace we'll do with that.
Yeah, I agree with everything you said, but I was just specifically talking about a timeframe, a goal, and the, and the timing that you're going to do this, but all that other stuff does count, because it's a quality town meeting, so...
We're working on getting some scheduled in May and June now.
It's just something scheduled.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? We will take the vote.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
No.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to item two.
Authorizing the submission of the grant application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resource Recreation Passport Grant Program in the amount of $45,000 to assist with the Lakeside Park picnic shelter project.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We will move on to item three.
Recommending the Michigan Liquor Control Commission not renew the Class C SDM liquor license for Military Street Music Cafe, licensee SJP Enterprises Incorporated, 1102 Military Street.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second? Councilmember Ruiz, before I open it up to discussion, I, I would like to ask the chief if he could come up and give us a brief report, we had asked at the last, well, I think it was like six weeks ago, to have the owner meet with you, so I'm kind of wondering how those meetings went.
Sure, mayor, council, city manager, as you recall, quite some time ago, we met in regards to a public hearing that I brought forth, the issues that were going on with the Military Street Cafe. I had not heard from the owner of that establishment since the, that hearing date, until a Times-Herald article ran in regards to the bar, and an issue that had occurred to the bar. The following morning, I heard from Mr. Petuski, and we talked on the phone, I called him back, and he told me that he was, we, we discussed a couple incidents, he talked to me, told me he was working on his plan, and that he hoped to get back to me with that plan. We've had a couple different things going on in that time period in regards to the bar, and I did hear from Mr. Petuski shortly after, I believe it was the 18th, after the pub crawl, asking how the pub crawl went, and, and I think he was specifically looking towards if there was issues at her, his bar, and I indicated there was one fight that was at the bar, away from the bar, but we didn't hold the bar responsible, there were fights at other different locations, and it was more towards the crowd, but I thought it was a pretty good pub crawl for the year, and the statistics bore that out. I've had the impression, I was hoping that Mr. Petuski would come forward much sooner than today at 2:35, when I received his, his file, and I was hoping that he'd bring me something of substance that really showed a difference in, in a thought process. This morning, as I, I came in, I read the newspaper, and, and I noticed that Mr. Petuski's quoted, talking about the padding of calls, everybody's got cell phones these days, anybody can call the police to say, I lost my purse, I lost my, at Military Street Cafe, it's frustrating, it's a livelihood in extreme measure. I don't pad calls, okay? I, I tried to look at this a very open-minded and objective, and until an incident over this past week, or week and a half ago that we began to investigate, did I finally make my mind up, and I'd asked that, I have some film I'd like to show the council on why I think that we need to go forward. What you're about to see is a search warrant that was served on the Military Street Cafe, where we seized the information, the surveillance tapes of the bar. Notice the time, it's 5:26 in the morning, there's still people in the bar, there's alcohol on the table, they're drinking from the beer bottles, you'll see Mr. Petuski assault another gentleman that's in the bar. Did you see all the beer bottles on the table? Obviously, the beer bottles are supposed to be cleared off the table, and all the people that are in there working and cleaning are supposed to be inside the bar. There's one gentleman that's pushing a bucket, there's the assault, then you'll see him go up and stomp... the assault, then you'll see him go up and stomp him. Now, based on that type of activity, I guess I don't get the impression that they're serious about changing what's going on in the bar. If you're going to allow that type of activity to occur after bar hours, then what are you going to allow to occur during bar hours? I would have hoped that if Mr. Petuski was serious about this, he knew that I was monitoring his operations, it's his bar, why would you take this chance, consume alcohol after hours, allow intoxicated people on premises? There's another assault that occurs, and this, this little short thing is edited over several hours. The drinking started a little after two-thirty, it ended around seven AM. You'll see shortly a bottle get thrown. What you won't see is some, uh, sexual, uh, um, uh, removal of a top of a, of a, a person there, some other activity, which I had edited out, uh, the placing of shots on the bar where they drank, and you won't see that. Uh, and for, I just thought that a, a short portion would show the issue. You know, I think Mr. Petuski cares about his bar, and, and I think in some times, he's overwhelmed with the activity that goes there. So I tried to take this in the, in the best possible light, and I looked at his plan. And I looked at his plan based on what I'm seeing there at five-thirty in the morning. New name for the bar, a fresh start. New signage. Reposition front bar to serve better cus-, to serve customers better. Recover walls with oak veneer and trim along new paint to the dining area for a fresh look. Design a new menu to draw customer, new customer base. Change the music format to draw a different audience. You'll see the one person in the back pushing the bucket, he's apparently working. Start live entertainment during dinner hours to promote food sales. Add outdoor lighting at the front of the bar to brighten up the building. Have security visible from my ears, the bar to deter problems. Here comes another assault here shortly. Bar any patrons involved in fighting, I found that one humorous. Update staff training regarding liquor laws, new changes for the business. I found that humorous as well. Enforce a strict dress code at night to draw a better crowd and atmosphere. You'll see the bar, uh, that bottle of beer comes sailing over here shortly. This type of activity is going to occur when the bar is closed, after hours, at five-thirty in the morning, and, and I will tell you today, Mr. Petuski, just so you're aware, I have a warrant for your arrest for that assault. It is active, I have officers here to take you into custody. In addition, there'll be additional warrants issued for the activity that occurred in the bar, as well as LCC violations and sanctions. In addition, we found evidence of, uh, there goes the beer bottle. We found evidence of, uh, tampering with, uh, giving the curves, with refills for the bottles. We did the search work with two investigators from the LCC. At this point, council, I think I've made my case pretty clear. I'll leave it up to you, but I'm asking that you request the Liquor Control Commission, take a look at this licensee and make the determination that they want to. Available for any questions?
Well, I guess I will ask if there's anyone that has any questions.
Off of vote.
Case is made.
Off of vote.
There's no discussion, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Calling for the vote.
Oh, oh, Lord. Yeah, I can't go for this.
Councilmember Harris?
I come here tonight with an open mind and stuff, and it kinda-
Can I make a comment before you vote at all, or not?
No, that you should have made your comments during public comment. There's no time-
I didn't know this was going to happen afterwards, so-
Well, normally, we just, uh, this is the time for the council to discuss the item.
And I didn't know that video was going to be shown, which I can explain, but apparently not, so.
Yeah.
Process requirements, I, I would love to-
Okay, that's, that's fine. Uh, Mr. Fletcher says that you should have the opportunity, so please come forward.
Obviously, to show good light, that was, that was pub crawl morning, or day after pub crawl. We had a time change involved. Everybody in that room did work for me. The problem with the assault with the one person was day help. I had hired that day to work pub crawl. And there's, I didn't realize it was going to be shown because I, this investigation, there's more to this than has been lighted, but there was a, a confrontation with him and what he was making for the night, very upset. I thought he made great money. It was a great pub crawl, but not overall a, um, typically have a pub crawl, it's not a big tipping night, okay? You have, you have a lot of people that come in and out, so your ticket item is not real large and the tip is not real large. And that's what these guys are working. Part of it was a flat rate paid and part, part of it was a tip out, okay? And for the hours he put in, I thought he made great money. And we went back and forth, and it, it, as you saw, the reason altercation happened, his mother works for me. He started getting very belligerent with his mother. There's no audio, obviously, in that tape, but it got to the point to where there was, "F you, mom, I don't care if you die tomorrow." Um, and I said, and part of that video was, I said, "Look, you shouldn't talk to your mom that way. I mean, if I lost my mom tomorrow, I'd be devastated. We have, I have a very tight family. F you, Steve, I'll talk to my mom any way I want to," and that, at that point where I was going, just say, "Just go, just leave." And just, you know, I'm not making excuses, but it's a point to where everybody has a breaking point. And it was a point of where it just kept poking the bear. How far can I push this guy? How can I far, can I push this guy? I didn't ask him to come back. He was asked to leave before that. I said, "Just go." At, we're, we're all tired. I had three days of twenty-hour days putting pub crawl together. We had just got done, there was a time change involved with that also, but, you know, we had tents to tear down that night, we had, uh, lightning in the tents to tear down because the vendors were coming to get him, we had the outside to clean up, we had porta-johns getting picked up. This is not a regular occurring thing. This, I've been in business sixteen years. This is like one time this has happened after a pub crawl, trying to diffuse people, calm them down, and give them some thanks for the hard work they put through. But I didn't talk to the chief about this, I didn't know where this was going. As far as this goes, I, I had no idea. So, um, I know, uh, the gentleman, Brandon, was, was upset. I tried to reach out to him, because I'd known Brandon on and off for years. Um, his mother's worked for me for almost ten years. I've known him since he's been twelve or thirteen years old. He's worked for me as day help in the past. We've had a good relationship in the past, you know? What set me off too is I found out there might have been some drug use I didn't know about in the house with him. So maybe that's why he was getting, his, his disposition was off. And I am absolutely against, I'm negative drugs, I'm, I, it's not my thing. So that frustrated me, but his demeanor had changed for the night. Now, I had twenty people working for me that night on that pub crawl. We would probably have between three to four hundred people through the whole night in the, in the bar. So our capacity is almost five hundred with the tent outside and the, uh, capacity inside, we had three to four hundred people running around in, or, or participating in pub crawl. Well, I was busy. I was running around the whole night trying to make sure everything was okay, to diffuse things. And, and we get to the end of the night and we got unhappy people, and it's like, "Just go home," you know? We're all trying to unwind, we're all tired, we've all been here too long, you know, started at seven-thirty the day before, and we're winding down and dealing with all these patrons the whole day here. Um, once again, this doesn't, not depict an, an accurate, uh, view of my business as far as I'm concerned, and, and my patrons. It's, it's, everybody who was there was, was an employee, okay? Just getting done, cleaning up. I know it sounds like it's an easy deal task to clean up, but when you have a big night like that, it takes hours. It takes hours just to count the tips out and put them in bundles and count them out. It's not a, it's not a fifteen-minute deal to get done. Um, I thought we did well because we didn't have any real incidents. I mean, we had no incidents outside that were, were drawing, uh, uh, fights or the police or anything. It was an in-house, uh, problem with staff. It was, you know, with one person out of twenty people. Everybody else was happy. And, you know, I apologized to him, I said, "It got out of hand," but you, you were, you were egging everybody on, not just myself. And deliberating his mother down to nothing. I mean, you know, she was basically useless and trash. I said, "Man, it's just not the way to talk to your mother," you know? We've all had a long day. It's very frustrating. And, you know, wanted to wrap it up, but he was just, he was wired. I don't know what he was on, but he was wired. And, and as of today, even had his mother call, uh, Detective Kerrigan, to relay some information. She got his voicemail. She didn't get a, uh, she didn't get a, actually get to talk to him. But, uh, I, I don't take this lightly. I know the video shows, and you can look at that thing ten different ways and get what you want out of it, but I've been here sixteen years. I've seen a lot of changes in this town, okay? I've been promised a lot of good things were going to happen to this town, and we're still waiting. Good things are happening, but I still want to be here for the long haul. I've got a big investment on that corner, and, uh, you know, I don't claim to be perfect, but I work a full-time job, have a clean record there. I've been here sixteen years, I've had a lot of longtime employees working for me. We've already implemented some changes here since pub crawl, even since our last meeting at, um, when it was, spoke to Mayor Chief on the eighth, I believe it was, uh, February. A lot of it, format changes, we're already implemented. To not have, the, the parties we had were profitable. The problem is, um, the, the downfall from the parties is what caused problems. People leaving. The, the, the nonconformity of leaving, I guess, the problems we had in the city lot, the fighting and whatnot. Um, and, and that's the direction we're headed in, honestly. It's, it's not a smoke and mirrors thing. I know Chief is frustrated. I'm frustrated too. I'm frustrated when we put three days before pub crawl in like twenty-hour days, and then I get unhappy people at the end of the night. It's very frustrating. You don't feel like you accomplished anything. When your whole staff seems mostly happy and you get one or two bad apples that are frustrated, and they're day help, they're not regular employees. You know, they were brought on because they knew, like I say, his mother worked for me for the last ten, twelve years. So, format, like I say, it's on your sheet, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a scripted thing we put together. It's our direction, it's our goal to put this together. We want to be a good part of the community, you know? And it's going to happen. We'd like it to happen anyways. Um, you know, we've been promised a lot of things with just other projects going down the road here, the Sperry's projects, that's been four or five years. The, the NBD building turning into a boutique hotel. That was supposed to happen in November. Well, it's going into April now. Don't see much happening over there. Our things are going to happen. Um, did anybody make it out for pub crawl? Anybody get out for pub crawl? I didn't see any of your faces. You make it out anywhere?
I wasn't in town.
Gotcha.
But thank you for your comments. Um, it would only be for Mr. Petuski. Um, thank you for making your comments.
I mean, I, like I say, video shows, it looks like nothing was getting done, but actually before that, there was a lot of cleanup going on. My cleaning guy gets in pretty early, because he knew he had a, a ten-hour day of cleaning. We had, we had tables to clean off, we had tables wiped down. We, we tried to help them out in the meantime before that, to get that done too. So, thank you.
Um, we did have a, a motion and a second, and we started on the vote. I guess it would-
And I'm sorry, uh, Mayor, apologize to the council, when I say I can't stand this, I reiterate, that was a yes.
Yes. Council, yeah.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. I'd just like to say that I don't believe that the, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but it's not just that one incidence. Um, I think the fact that the, you know, we do value the chief's opinion, and there were no meetings that took place in the last six weeks to, to talk about this. It was just today that we got it.
I, I spoke with the chief four, five times already.
But we didn't get a plan. But anyways, uh, if I could just finish, and I do know that the deadline for us to submit this recommendation, I believe, is March thirty-first, and then they have the whole month of April where you've afforded the opportunity at the Liquor Control Commission. The actual renewal is not until May the first, certainly if there's something that changes dramatically. Uh, there is always that option that council can revisit it, uh, for a rescension, but that would definitely depend on what the, you know, the chief sees occurring or what happens. But at this point, then it's, uh, a recommendation will go to Michigan Liquor Control Commission that's for denial of renewal. And we will move on to resolution number four.
Approving the contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation for reconstruction of Glenwood Avenue from Huron Avenue to Merchant Street.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion?
Madam Mayor, if I could, I would like to bring Nicole Smith up. She, uh, works on Community Development Office and helps manage these funds. As you all know, um, David Haynes is on leave, um, and so he'll, she'll quickly brief you on this. See if she can top the last one.
Let me on the spot. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, as you are aware, we're an entitlement community. Every year, we receive the CD Beijing Home Dollars. Tonight, we're here to ask, um, so we can allocate some of our home dollars to the Port Huron Neighborhood Housing Corporation. They want to continue to purchase rehab and resell homes to low to moderate income first-time home buyers.
She's on the wrong, you're on the wrong one. It's number four, the reconstruction of-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I meant to call it Lenny for this one. I'm sorry.
Not your fault.
I was reading the wrong one. I am so sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But you did a great job.
I looked at it. I don't know, what is happening here? I kept looking and I'm like, "What is he doing?"
Not April Fool's Day yet.
Yeah, sorry, this is Lenny, sorry.
That was not your fault, it was Mr. Fried's fault.
That was my fault, Nicole, sorry. My apologies. But you did great.
Yeah, but all the time, I would say, "Stop," and I'd just look at him like, "Okay."
I wondered how we got to Community Development.
Okay.
Yes, you're all right.
Is there a bigger question? I just wanted to explain what this is.
Just quickly, explain the grant.
The contract.
We've been before you, Madam Mayor and, and council, uh, to discuss this project on various occasions, and this right here is simply, uh, a requirement from the DOT that we have a resolution that authorizes us to enter into contract with them for the work that they're going to be doing, which is the work on, uh, Glenwood, uh, coming up this spring. It's a project we've, we've discussed, uh, before. Any, any questions on, on the project itself? This is simply, uh, a formality to allow us to enter into a contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation in order for us to, you know, complete that work.
Madam Mayor, um-
Yes, Mr. Fried.
The-